Good evening if we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening everybody. All right, first up reporter the chairman. I'll just briefly touch upon the events over the weekend Friday into Saturday up in Hartford. The Republican budget did come to the floor of the senate and passed the senate and then went to the house and did in fact pass the house just after midnight on I guess Saturday morning. So next up is presenting that budget to the governor. He has claimed and says that he plans to veto it so we'll have to wait and see what's gonna happen and if that does get vetoed and if they go back to the drawing board and what happens. I know myself and a couple of others here have sent emails to the governor urging him to sign the budget that passed. You know, we just got, I know I got a stock response that says your email has been received so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm not sure if he's reading them. I don't know but that's basically where it stands right now so we're in a wait and see. JP did indicate that after thirty days if no action is taken it just goes into law. I don't know. So we're again still in a wait and see and we'll see if it. It does take awhile according to JP to get the budget to the desk. It's not like an automatic thing. So I think they were anticipating it should be this week that it hits the desk so we'll just have to see if he does in fact veto it and what happens after that. So unfortunately no more news than that. We will move on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thanks Jim. Any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. The motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committee and liaisons and I do see our Massey, Will and Kevin here. So thank you boys and we'll start with you.
So tomorrow night we have the first.
So workshop. FASO is basically the way to get federal financial aid for students going to college in the coming years. So that's gonna be tomorrow night and this is the first of two, the second being on October 3rd. Or first of, I think at least two, the second being on October 3rd. And the first one is more of like an informational session that kinda tells you like the premise of the whole program and how the system like happens. And then the second session on October 3rd is where you come in with the actual forms and they like fill them out for you. So it's very like easy to use because it can be like a really difficult process to do on your own so it's good to have someone helping there.
On the 28th of September Massey will be hosting a blood drive. As well on the, on October 7th Massey will be hosting the SAT. And boot camps for the SAT is on the 30th and 31st of September and it's hosted by Catalyst. Capstone, that's a huge topic as of the last week and this week as well in school. Seniors putting all their work and effort into getting that final essay or what have it done. Myself I'm doing it early, Will's presenting later in the year and also just like to discuss a little bit more about that.
Yeah, so for the capstone there's two options. Basically there's an early option and a late option. The people who are trying to get it done early have just handed in the majority of their work I think today or tomorrow. And so that the whole, the idea of that is to get it completely over with so that your spring is free essentially. And then there's people like me who are kinda pushing it off but with the idea of my, in mind of like so much is going on in the fall that you kinda want it not be another burden on your hands. So usually we have about fifty or sixty people going early, doing the presentation early. But this year we have over a hundred which Mr. Cobza will discuss later in the meeting.
Great, thank you. Shannon.
My question is about the blood drive. When is it and can we come and get blood too?
September 28th. I don't know the time of day, it's usually all day and I think it is. Red cross.
And Will and Kevin are seniors so Mr. Cobza you'll have junior for us at the next meeting?
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Anybody else have reports tonight? All right, we had finance committee prior to this and discussed a couple of issues going on. First is insurance update. What is it, five, six? Remind me again?
Two hundred?
No, over.
Five, over.
Over fifty, oh I believe it was six, over fifty thousand, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we have already five, six people that have high claims over fifty thousand right now. And we had, did we have one person hit stop loss? I know you mentioned that last week.
No, I think what the, what it was is the cost or the billed amount was about a hundred and eighty thousand but the negotiated rates and what Cigna actually paid out were significantly less.
Right, so we're still trending not so great at this point. Stephanie Roof is pretty much at completion so they are gonna convene the Stephanie Roof Committee to close that out next month. We'll talk about budget a little bit later with the dates and everything for the upcoming budget workshops. And then pretty much end of your fiscal year, we ended the year, what is it, three sixty?
Three twenty-three.
Three twenty-three. So we're looking to put sixty in a fund for our turf fields replacement eventually, you know, start building that up so we'll have funds available. The balance of the two sixty-three, we are going to ask the Board of Finance to put that into our insurance reserve because of our, you know, continuing our bad insurance trend again so far. So that is what we're gonna be questioning and that's what we're gonna vote on later in the agenda to do those two things and ask for those two things be done. All right. We will move on to public participation if anybody would like to speak. All righty, we will move on to the report of the superintendent then.
Okay, thank you. Gabby's gonna review our fund activity status.
So just Donna already touched on insurance a little bit but a little more detail. Claims through August of this year were one point six million as opposed to one point three million through August of 2016. So we're actually a little higher than we were last year, which is seemingly hard to believe but we have six claims over fifty thousand dollars. Again, we're still working with Brown and Brown. As John mentioned at the last meeting, we are saving about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars through a combination of administrative and prescription plan. There's not a lot more to be said on that. I mean, it is what it is. In terms of the 2018 budget, all summer work has been completed. Again, as Donna mentioned, Stephanie Roof should be closed out from a project perspect, from a doing perspective as of Thursday, close of business. We'll have a final walkthrough, I believe it's October 4th and then we'll come back to you with the report on that anything that might need to be buttoned up. But we're pretty confident that it's, it's going to be fine. And you know, the state budget obviously is still a huge unknown which kinda leaves us in the unknown. I think we're in a little bit better shape than some other districts. I was actually on the phone earlier today with the business manager in Danbury and you know, they stand to lose a lot if, if the budget doesn't go through, if there is no budget. While they gain some, they still stand to lose a lot because of other things to alliance districts and things like that. So he was basically telling me that they would lose, they would have to cut all their, almost all of their coaches so they, so Danbury High would have like no sports. That's one of the options that they're looking at to mitigate cuts. So you know, we're in slightly better shape than they are but still not good.
So Gabby had talked about the committee, the building committee meeting on October 16th before the board meeting at seven PM. So if everybody's okay with that, we can send out an invitation for that. Great. So let's, the next thing on the agenda is the budget timeline and at your place is a calendar and also the budget timeline that Gabby had in, in the, in the agenda. But what we wanted to show you is that that two weeks in December, if you look at the December calendar, that two weeks in December has a lot of activities. So it's, we're talking about you know, a lot of musical events whether it's strings and orchestra, things like that. So the things that are already set are the, the 4th of December which is our first, it's a scheduled board meeting and it's our really, we do the presentation of the budget and it's the first workshop. And then we know on the 18th is another scheduled board meeting and that is another workshop that just kinda finishes up the budget. But what we've had in the past is we have had three days between the two. In the last couple of years we've done two days between the two and actually I think last year we canceled one of the two. So maybe the answer is to have just one between both of those days or two. But if you look at the calendar, there are a lot of activities and it's gonna be hard to pick a date. But we thought we could have a discussion today.
Yeah, so we were discussing earlier that obviously the 4th we would have a regular board meeting, the superintendent budget presentation, we would go right into a workshop that first night. The 18th we would keep at our regular board meeting, we would keep the agenda light and have a workshop that night. You can see the proposed dates there. We were looking to say probably the 13th is the best date. There is a cabaret night at Jockey Hollow but not sure if that affects anybody here. And maybe do that. The other proposed dates are the 7th. I personally can't be here but don't hold anything up because of me because that is eighth grade orientation for Massey and I do have an eighth grader going to Massey next year so we'll be there.
And there'll be a lot of people in this building.
Yeah, the building will be packed with, with eighth grade parents and kids because the kids come too, right?
Yes.
And then the other date was the 11th and again not sure if this affects anybody which is the Jockey Hollow Middle School 7th and 8th grade strings concert. So the other question is whether or not starting at six o'clock as opposed to we've normally done six thirty is okay with any, everybody or is six, six o'clock too early for everybody to get together and meet? That's the other question. So I'll put that out to everybody as to conflicts or whatever. I would say we would pick two dates, possibly just one because we did cancel one last year. You know, and we would still also have the January 2nd date too.
Or we just do like, like a one marathon.
And that's fine.
And six PM is fine for me, I don't know.
Six o'clock, George would six PM for a budget workshop, start with you, be okay with you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Especially if we're doing a marathon and knocking it out.
And we're talking about just doing one.
Instead of several sessions.
We'll have the 4th which would be, the 4th would be our normal present, you know, superintendent presentation, go right into a workshop right then. The 18th which is another one of our regular board meetings, we'd keep the agenda light and have a workshop that night and then just do one other workshop because the calendars that are in front of you, they're kind of packed with stuff. You know, I don't know if these affect you, 8th grade open house for Massey, 7th and 8th grade strings concert or cabaret night. No, okay. And I don't know about Carlos or Christine. And, oh no, Christine we would know, she doesn't have anybody. It would be Carlos, I don't know about Carlos.
And the 13th was the best night?
The 13th we were thinking is the best night but again, we didn't know if anybody was affected by 8th grade, 7th and 8th grade strings. It could be the 11th too. You know, it, it's up to everybody here which everybody would prefer.
At this point either one of those is okay with me.
Anybody have a preference? If they want the 11th and keep them all on Mondays or you wanna try the 13th?
I think Monday's good.
Monday's good?
Yeah.
Does everybody just wanna do the 11th and do like Mondays?
Yeah.
Okay.
Jerry, Alan, that's okay with you guys? Jim, that's good?
So six PM then.
So we'll do six PM on the 11th, so let's do that date. And that's perfect.
Great.
And if something happens and we need to add the 13th? We can but I think if we just do a marathon and even go to nine.
And we'll just make sure the budget's light for the two board meetings so that we can have plenty of time.
Perfect, that's perfect. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Last board meeting we talked about Carl Perkins Grant and how excited we were about it. Dr. Zambry has some bad news.
Well that sums it up right there. Yeah, I came to you very excited and optimistic and unfortunately both were misplaced. The next day we found out that we were rejected. But what we're doing is we are gonna turn this into a learning experience. Bill McDonough is actually gathering the winning applications and we're gonna take those and we're gonna study them and see what it was we didn't get right and hopefully next time out make that into a grant application that will be accepted.
Great, thanks. And it was a lot of work but maybe not in vain as we go forward. The other thing that I wanted to share with the board is something that happened at Southern Fairfield County Superintendent's Association meeting. As you know, we, every, every other month we have a meeting with the area superintendents and there's all kinds of different things on the agenda. Well this month the, the information on the agenda was the budget as it's been everywhere but we also talked about how each district in Southern Fairfield County is being affected by the budget and we don't see that being remedied anytime soon. That we're always gonna be talking about budgets, Connecticut's in a kind of a bad way. So what we did talk about was a way to collaborate with each other on possible operations and services that we can combine to save some money. And we do this informally with one another. Kay will call if she knows that a student in Shelton is going to the same school that us, our place student in Shelton is going to the same school in Monroe, she'll call Shelton and we'll combine bus runs. But there's not been nothing formal. Well the superintendents, we sat together and we came up with another date. We're gonna meet Friday, October 13th to look at all the ways we can combine services and help. From small things like we all have to pump our, pump our septic. Why don't we all put out one bid to see how low we can get for all the Southern Fairfield County towns to pay for that? Or the fire extinguisher recharges that we have to do a year. We have to do that, we all have to do that. So we're looking at those things to bigger things like special ed transportation because we know that there, there's a lot of money there. Sometimes we might have one student on a bus but if we can combine with other districts. Some of the districts and something that Gabby and I are gonna look at, some of the districts purchased their own vans and it felt that that was much cheaper than using the bus company. So we're gonna look at that to see if that in fact happened. We used to years and years ago have our own vans but what, what happened was maintenance started to get too expensive so we went back to the bus company. But that's something we're gonna look at as a group, as a consortium. To things like alternative school. You know, we have an alternative program, some other districts have. We do a share with Trumbull but not all the other Southern Fairfield Counties do that. And they're talking about, well maybe we can look at programs and have them for different reasons. The state just came out with a whole alternative ed plan. It's like, it's guidelines right now and they're just a draft form. The law about making an alternative, I'm sorry, a expelled student have a full day program has been put on hold but that's gonna come back. And we, I just talked to a superintendent today, we have to come up with a way to handle that. So it will be too expensive for Monroe to have to do that by ourselves but if we can combine services with the Southern Fairfield County towns, we can do that. So I have to tell you, it was, it was a really great meeting. We were all kinda fired up about it. There'll be a time when we have to have Gabby come to the meeting and Jack come to the meeting and Kay come to a meeting so we can have the people that are experts in their area talk about how they can share services. But I just wanted to give you a heads up, it was a very positive thing. We're gonna look at ways to save money and I'll keep you informed along the way. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about today was the Saturday morning conversation updates. We, Jack and I and Steve were at the Edith Wheeler Memorial Library last Saturday. We had about a half a dozen parents and citizens there. We had all three of our first selecting candidates with us at one point or another and we were able to talk to the, the people that were there. You know, I didn't really know what to expect. We didn't know how many people were gonna come and maybe it was the Apple Festival that drew, maybe it was the first selecting candidates that drew people, we don't know. But they came and they talked to us. We had some really good conversations. One of the things that came up was about the amount of paper that's mailed home or that goes home, that goes home in backpacks. So it wasn't just one person who mentioned it, it was, it was a series of people who came up and talked about that. So this newsletter wasn't mailed home to everyone. It was, it was out electronically. We put it on the Twitter feed, we put it on Facebook, we put it on listserv. And then on the back it says going forward, this is gonna be electronic. If you wanna paper copy, call this number, call central office and we'll send you a paper copy. Because remember the senior citizens said they liked it coming home to their house. So we dropped off about forty copies to Senior Citizen Center. We dropped off to Edith Wheeler Memorial Library and we dropped off to Town Hall. But that came out of that Saturday morning conversation where people were concerned that we were spending, although sometimes the amount of money they thought we were spending was skewed because you know, somebody said, well you spent sixty thousand dollars on postage and it came back, we spent seven thousand dollars on postage. So some of the amounts are skewed but the point was well taken. The other thing I'm doing is gonna meet with the PTOs because their problems were that PTOs the first week sent out lots and lots of paper. As a matter of fact, one of the gentlemen that we talked to on Saturday came to see me again on Monday or Tuesday to kinda point out all the paper that's sent home. So we're gonna look at ways to reduce that there. So all in all, I think it was a very successful time. I appreciate people being there. We had great conversations with our first selecting candidates. All of them said that they would continue. So we're kinda happy for that.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for John before we move on? All right, hearing none, we will move on. We have no old business to, this evening. New business, we have, we're approving a capstone early release request for the high school because we have so many students who plan to participate in a capstone presentation early. Joe, do you wanna come up and talk about this?
I'm having it go over. Nice job setting the table for me, thanks guys. Could've planned that before. Yeah, as you see on our, on the list here, I'm requesting hopefully to have an early release day. It's kinda what I call a late early release day. Excuse me, a one o'clock release on October 18th to accommodate early capstone presentations. If you look at our trend data, 2013, you know, one person presented early. Sorry, it was Kevin's sister, he's heard that several times. 2014 it was ten, 2000, you know, you see the data there. Fifteen it was thirty-three. And I thought we were, I thought we had kinda plateaued the last two years and I thought that's where we were gonna kinda stick, right around fifty-five or sixty. So when we do the early presentations, we usually just do it in-house, we just do it with the staff. We don't bring in the community like we do in the, in the springtime. But as you see what happened this year, we have a hundred and four kids that have taken advantage like Kevin of presenting early and Will has good reason not to as well. I talked to, you know, we were talking about it before. You know, some kids don't do it because they're in the middle of applying for college and all the other stuff that comes around with, you know, the beginning of senior year so. But for some, for some reason, you know, this year, I don't, I don't know if this is gonna become a new trend or not but a hundred and four kids, it's a good thing. We always kind of encourage the kids, you know, we introduce it in March for a reason so kids can get a jump on it and use the summertime to, you know, to get their hours in, do their written pieces and present early if they want to. So you know, this, this may be a new normal for us. But a hundred and four kids, we can't, we can't manage as a, as a staff by ourselves. Like I said, we used to do it just as in lieu of our faculty meeting at the end of the day, at the end of the day in October but we don't have enough faculty to give the kids really an authentic experience. The purpose of capstone is to get in front of a, you know, a group of people that you don't necessarily know and present to them and tell them about your topic and whatnot. And you know, with a hundred and four kids, we can't do that with, you know, eighty something certified, certified staff. What we would be looking to do was open this up to veteran judges who've come in the past. So normally when we do our capstone day, it's usually an eleven AM early dismissal. The judges come at eleven, they do, they go through a training, we have a quick kinda grab and go lunch. They go and they read the portfolios and then they start, and then they start participating in the presentations for any of you folks who've, who've ever judged before. What we were gonna do with this one to kinda streamline a little bit is, is have them come at one o'clock. The people who have already been trained, the people who just did it, not all of them but we'll try to tap into the people who judged in May and have them, and have them come back and present. A lot of them have always asked, hey, we'd love to come in the beginning of the year too and we've always been able to, you know, do it ourselves but this gives us an opportunity to, you know, to open it up to them as well. So, and they don't need to go through the whole training again. So there's a couple of implications, you know, I'll look at the schedule on the back in a second. And then the cost, I spoke to the bus company, you know, we would have to run an extra shuttle bus. The only conflict it creates with a pre-K is dismissing at the same time. So there's a shuttle bus but I was told it's seen pretty, pretty reasonable, like fifty or five, sixty dollar charge for a shuttle bus. The, the, if you flip on the backside, there's the, the schedule that we're kinda proposing. And I just gave you the, our regular day schedule just so you kinda have an idea of what we're talking about in terms of lost instructional time. If you look at the top one, the proposed capstone early release schedule for October, you know, if you look at classes, it's thirty-eight to forty minutes. The only reason for the difference in those, in those minutes by the way is that you see where it's thirty-nine or forty minutes, those are periods where there's some kind of announcements done in the beginning or the end of the day. And second period is our, is our daily announcements. But if you look there, you know, roughly thirty-eight, thirty-nine minutes periods as compared to a regular day when it's about forty-five, forty-seven minutes. And our regular earliest missile which is a two, two hour earliest missile, we're looking at classes about thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty minutes. So I think it's a good lead. It's nice that the kids are getting it done and getting on top of that. And you know, again, I, I think the most important piece of it is to try to give them as authentic experience as possible and get people from the community in here to see, you know, some of the great things that get to them.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the Massey High School early release date for capstone? Thank you Jerry, do a second. Thank you Shannon. Any discussion? I know my marching orders tonight from my child was could you approve the date so that, you know, I know when I have to do my presentation. It was one of the one oh four. No other, no other? All right, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to item B which is the discussion and approval to establish and appoint members to the superintendent search committee. I will read the draft motion before so somebody can approve, make the motion. Motion that the Board of Education establishes a superintendent search committee and appoints all the current members of the Monroe Board of Education as well as any newly appointed or elected members who may take office in 2017 together with a teacher representative, representative and administrator, administrator representative and a parent representative to that committee. The sole purpose of the committee is to recommend to the Monroe Board of Education a candidate or candidates for the next, for the executive level employment position of superintendent of schools. So I have a motion to establish the committee. Thank you Alan. Do I have a second? Thank you Jim. Any discussion on this? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. We have established the superintendent search committee.
Do you want me to reach out to the MEA and Massey and the press council?
Please, thank you. We will move on to item C which is approval of entering into a memorandum of understanding with the MEA for the off-year teacher retirement incentive. Before you all is the memorandum. As you know, under the teacher's contract, the retirement benefit is only offered every other year. We have been approached by the MEA who has surveyed their employees and there are six current staff members who are interested in taking advantage of an early retirement benefit. The advantage of this is that the payout is over a longer period of time so we do save money because you do not have the large twenty-five thousand dollar payout that first year but it's stretched over a longer period. And so we need to approve whether or not we are going to allow everybody to retire and take advantage of that. It would be to our advantage.
I just wanna say, they don't have to tell us in the, in the years that it's offered in the contract until January. This memorandum understanding will say they have to tell us by October 15th so we'll know in plenty of time to present the budget, which has always been a problem in the off-years because we don't know until January. So the deadline for them is October 15th so we'll have that for our budget.
So do I have a motion to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the MEA for an off-year teacher retirement incentive? Thank you George, do I have a second? Thank you Shannon. Discussion on this? Yes, David.
John, how's the backfill? Sometimes when you offer this, you get so many retirements, then you're in a panic of coming, people coming in.
Well, we filed the same MOU as before so it asks for the first eight only. And then if it's, you know, nine or ten, we can come back and look at that and see how that works that way. You know, our hope is that with eight people, we'll be able to fill them. You know, our hope is that with eight people, we'll be able to fill them with teachers that are a lot less, younger teachers, a lot less, and we'll be able to save some money for the budget, and that's what the hope is.
I just want good quality people coming in as well.
Absolutely. We have a very rigorous interview process in Monroe. But that starts with a committee, that there's a classroom observation that they have to go through. So we've, we're really happy with the hires that we've had the last several years, because we've gone through this pretty rigorous process.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion on this? All right, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. We will move on to item D, which is curriculum, instructional materials, and resource proposals for first review. And we have four up, so.
Sheila's going to start us off.
Okay, great.
Thank you. We've got Lisa Peterson, who's here to talk about three different resources for world language classes. And we also have Ian Lowell, who's here to talk to us about a middle school resource for social studies. So Lisa's going to come up first.
Just, so you know, this is presented to the curriculum committee. It's already been approved and vetted through the curriculum committee, and it was recommended at the curriculum committee that it, that they present to the Board of Ed for your approval.
The World Languages Department is asking for approval for three different resources for upper-level French and Spanish. Most of the reason for the request is increased enrollment. We have, for the first time since I've been here, a separate advanced placement Spanish and senior level six course. That's never happened before. We have, I think, four different levels of, four additional sections of level five running this year. And as a result of that increased enrollment, we need additional materials. The other reason is that as the AP program grows, and as the revision to the exam and the program out of the College Board, which started in two thousand twelve, becomes more solidified, more and more good materials are available. So the first book would be a request for level five honors. We actually use this in the French program. This is the Spanish complement to that. It moves students at an intermediate level, but also provides support and foundation scaffolding-type lessons that are appropriate for a level five. And the other two texts are from Wayside Publishers, and they don't have the same names usually. French and Spanish books, they, they call them roughly the same thing, but these don't. They're totally different names. But they are the, the complimentary texts designed to build those skills that will lead students to success on the AP exam. That's not to say that they're not skills that are appropriate for all intermediate, high-to-advanced level learners, like simulated conversations, can, can I answer you in a conversation? Responding in emails, in writing. We took a look at the instructional reports that come out every year from our French and Spanish exams, and both of those areas are areas that we want to focus on, and these texts specifically address those repeatedly, and increasing levels of difficulty. And we have sample copies of, of all.
And Lisa, you're not talking about a book for every student. You're talking about classroom sets?
Classroom sets. It's three different resources, but in smaller quantities. I think the total cost would, and we have to see what's available at the time when we, when we buy it. And additions, sometimes we can use a, an older addition at a, at a reduced cost. But I'm, I'm assuming, I'm approximating about twenty-five hundred total for, for all of the books, because it would be classroom sets.
Did they put any of these online at all?
Some of them do have, have online support and ebook-type, type text. The, the publishers do have programs that are similar to Blackboard, where you can assign and collect materials, but those are at an increased cost, and we, we don't use those. But the, the electronic text is, is a useful piece, and most of us come with that support as well.
The problem is you have to buy the hard copy, the hard book.
As well?
And before they give you the online text. That's, they want you to buy the book.
We had that come up in the past. Wasn't it more expensive to do the electronic book than the hard copies?
They, they want you to buy the book, so they.
And they expire.
And they expire, and you, it'll cost more money in the long run unless you buy the book.
Right.
Yeah, they, they. They've got, they know what they're doing.
You know, the part I think that's really good here is, first of all, we had a larger, more enrollment. So what Lisa could have done is just say, you know, "I'm going to buy the books that we've always used." And that would have been easier going forward. But she and her department were saying, "No, wait a minute. We want, we know what we have to work on, so we want to look at materials that really match that." And again, it's not a book for every student, so they go from page one to page two hundred. These are all resources, and they use a lot of resources from the web, too. So, I mean, I applaud what you're trying to do, because you're doing.
In the upper levels, we use a lot of different materials, because a lot of the course is based in current events and what's actually happening. So I know in the, the first book, in the book, there, there's an article, and I believe it's in chapter one, but it gives you the reference to the website, and the website has an updated version of the same information. So kids can really see that this is, this is what's happening in the world now. Just because it's reprinted in a textbook doesn't mean it isn't, it isn't real. And all of our sample copies are the softcover copies, which are actually cheaper than the hardcover. But if we're using them in the classroom, we can use the softcover without, you know, worrying about them being destroyed in a, in a year and a bottom of a backpack.
So these are community resources opposed to each student gets their own?
Right.
And so this is Spanish Five and Spanish AP?
Spanish Five, Spanish AP, and French AP.
Okay. First time we're offering Spanish AP? Is that?
No, we've offered it for years, but this is the first time there's an entirely, it used to be for enrollment purposes. AP was a senior course. Students could like to take that, or Spanish Six is a senior course. And we used to differentiate within the same classroom, because for enrollment purposes, we didn't have separate sections. This year, we have a separate Spanish Six and two sections of AP running. So enrollment is really booming in our, in our book classes, in, in both languages.
And languages in the middle school, so.
And languages in the middle school.
It's been a really, I think Lisa spent a lot of time building up enrollment, seeing, and we're all seeing the need to have students be more literate in these languages, so.
It's a good problem to have.
It's a great problem to have, yeah.
All right, any other questions?
John, she mentioned twenty-five hundred dollars. Are these budgeted funds? Are they already budgeted?
Yes, Sheila.
They will be budgeted for, for next year. Taking a look to see, because it's not an exorbitant amount, is if I can kind of borrow from Peter to pay Paul, and let us get them into kids' hands this year. So that's what I'm looking at right now.
Usually, we, we go to the curriculum committee the year, and then it goes into effect the following year, because that's where we can budget it. But there, you know, if there's, twenty-five hundred dollars is not that much, and maybe we can buy less of one other book or something.
I, I think I've been able to figure out where I can pull it from for this year, so that way we can get them into students' hands.
Good, thank you. All right, next up.
Now we have Ian, who's looking at adding a resource to our middle school. And it's, it's a great, another one of those great situations where we're getting a, kind of a trade book, a book that kids can pick up out of the library and read, and it's not just a history textbook.
All right, we know kids do better in school when they read more, and so one of the things about, has changed in the history classroom over the last ten years that I've, I've, you know, discussed at, at previous meetings, is that we're shifting more towards inquiry, and we're using the textbook more as a resource, and diving into primary documents and things like that. But one of the other engaging pieces to really hook kids into history is to give them what I call real history, history books that you and I read in our, in our spare time, that really kind of pull you and engage you. And so this kind of developed over the course of last year. We, we visited several other middle schools and saw that they were, in fact, reading a lot of trade books in their classes. And it kind of stood out to me that, oh, we're not doing as much of that. And with, working closely with Mike Crowley and the English Department and the Teachers College Reading and Writing Program, we thought this would be a great way to enhance the reading across disciplines. And so then became the question of, well, what, what book or books should we, should we choose? And so that coincided with a curriculum revision in the eighth grade, where we decided, when we took all of U.S. history, from Columbus and before, all the way up to the present, we decided that we were going to split that according to the new curriculum frameworks from the state. And that, the new eighth-grade curriculum would now focus on the colonial period up through the Civil War and Reconstruction, and then would end basically in eighteen seventy-seven, which meant that we could spend a lot more time and depth in areas that we had previously moved faster through. One of those areas being the early presidents and the gargantuan issue of slavery, which is where this particular book comes in. It's called In the Shadow of Liberty. It's by Kenneth Davis. He's a, a well-known author, but also fairly local. And the book is, as the title suggests, The Hidden History of Slavery and Four Presidents: Five Black Lives. So it's the story of George Washington, Thomas Jefferson, James Madison, and Andrew Jackson, and also the slaves that lived with them in the White House, that lived with them side by side. So the reason those, those people were chosen is because there's not a lot of personal information known about a lot of other slaves, but because they were close to men of importance and men of renown, their lives are also in the shadows, as the, as the title would suggest, but somewhat more is known. And so it's, it's a great way of, for us to, I guess, enhance our study of the presidents, while also enhancing the study of slavery. So I'll send the book around. It was a finalist for, for several book awards. I read it, several eighth grade, all the eighth grade, actually, teachers read it, and deemed it suitable for the eighth-grade audience. The lexile level is suitable for eighth grade. It's a, it's an eleven-seventy lexile, which falls right in the beginning of eighth grade, and.
It won't be read from cover to cover. You'll read it as you study the pieces?
Yeah, so as we get to George Washington, we'll read the chapter on George Washington. We get to Thomas Jefferson, we'll read that chapter. I'm in the process right now of creating a study guide for it, in hopes that it'll be approved. But the best news is that, over the summer, I applied for a Weller Foundation grant and received full funding for the cost of the books. So it would cost us nothing.
I'm actually reading the book, because Ian brought it up at the curriculum council. You know, I wasn't really sure how it was presented. The author does a fantastic job of presenting it, you know, talking about the atrocities of slavery, but what, what these men were part of. And it, it, the author also talks about, although it's difficult for us, you know, you can separate what George Washington did, but he was a slave owner, and how, you know, you rectify that. I think it's a really good book. Again, I'm enjoying reading it, and Ian kind of, when he talked about it at the curriculum council, it was something that seemed very interesting to me. And I wanted him, I wanted to see how it was presented, and I think the author presents it in a fantastic way to let people know that this is a terrible part of our history, but still a part of our history.
I hope it strikes a balance.
Yeah, I think it does.
All right, does anybody have questions? On this one? All right, all right, so these were all first reviews. These will be on our agenda next meeting, our first meeting in October for approval.
And Ian is working with the teachers at the middle school to look for other resources, too, so we might be back again.
Okay.
And again, I think it's great to note that Ian applied for a grant, so that there's no cost to this book to the town, that Ian is using his grant money to get these books. So Ian, thank you for taking the time to do that.
And obviously, if this book isn't approved, there, those funds can be used for another trade book that we decide is, is.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, we will move on to item E, which is policies, and these are all first-review policies. George, whenever you get it, whenever you're done.
Sure. Okay, so there's several on here tonight. Some are interrelated. There's a little bit of overlap here, but the first, they're all to do with students and student policy. So the first one is around a tendency intruency. That's five-one-one-three. And that just denotes that, because of change in new legislation, that we need to record in-school suspensions as present instead of absent. Number two, five-one-one-three dot two, which is a sub-policy, five-one-one-three, obviously, is, denotes the same thing, that we need to, to change that, that language to reflect the student as present and not absent. Five-one-one-four, there was a change in the, and perhaps I'm going to ask you to help me with this one, but I think that prior, there was a recent change to the law in the last couple of years, where it said that students that were expelled, we needed to provide them with tutoring or some sort of alternate education, in line with our ed policy, and treat those expelled students as, you know, incorporate them into some kind of alternate education.
It was, yeah, significantly more hours for expelled students' education in alternative education program.
So that was probably an unfunded mandate, as we have a lot of in this state. And so they gave us some relief on that, and we no longer need to adopt that. So we're basically reverting to the policy as it was two years ago.
And when they talk about alternative education, we're not talking about our alternative school.
Right.
This was, we do not send expelled students to our alternative school.
Right.
This was, we actually were doing tutoring.
Yeah, that's an important clarification. It is tutoring, not, not membership in that, that old school. So the, the five-one-two-five, that allows incarcerated parents access to student records if certain criteria is met, criteria being the, the type of crime that the student was, or the, the parent was convicted for, or subject to a court order, or things of that nature. So it just allows them some access to the student records, given those conditions are met. And the last one is Cabe-recommended law. We didn't take the whole Cabe-suggested policy. We, we just amended our existing policy with some added language, subset of language, and that basically will help us to align to the aforementioned five-one-one-four policy. So there is some overlap between each of these policies, which is why we need to make some adjustments in each of them.
Great. Does anybody have any questions on them? All right, this is, again, a first review, so these five policies will be on our October agenda, our first meeting in October for second review and a vote. We will move on to item F, which is what we discussed a little bit earlier in the agenda, about doing a motion about our unexpended funds of the three hundred and six, sorry, three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars to part, a portion of that to our insurance reserve, and a portion to that to a capital fund to, you know, start saving for turf fields carpet replacement. So do I have a motion to add unexpended funds, sixty thousand dollars, from the two thousand sixteen-seventeen school operating budget to the capital reserve account per state statute ten dash two forty-eight A, earmark forty thousand for the, and of that earmarked the forty thousand dollars of that to the turf fields renewal, and to move two hundred and sixty-three thousand and thirty dollars to the medical reserve account pending Board of Finance approval. If there is no Board of Finance approval, the entire three hundred and twenty-three thousand and thirty dollars shall be moved to the capital reserve account per state statute ten dash two forty-eight A. So I have a motion to approve that. Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jim. So basically, what we're saying is, out of the two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, we're asking sixty be put in the two forty-eight A account. Of that sixty, forty is earmarked specifically for the turf field, so that we can start saving for that carpet replacement. The other twenty will just be there. And that two hundred and sixty-three thousand of it will go to our insurance reserve to help build that up. Do I have questions on that? Just want to make sure everybody was clear. Yes.
That represents, I, I just want, you know, we've had some questions in the public about, wow, they're giving back, you know, two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Of our budget, that represents a point five-nine percent of our budget. So that means we have correctly budgeted and expended ninety-nine point four percent of our budget accurately. So, you know, that's something to be applauded. I think that when Jim froze the budget last year, in, in the middle of the year, because of some unexpected special education costs and other costs, that helped. But again, for Gabby and her department, and for the school administrators, to expend ninety-four point four percent of the budget accurately, it's not a lot to bring back to the town.
Great. Anybody else have any questions? Great, hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Do I, we have anything else before we move on to? thank you, motion passes. Um, do I, we have anything else before we move on to adjournment?
Um, I just wanted to say thank you for putting together that work, Jack, for the grant, and then the follow-up to find the grant that was approved to use it for next time. Because I always tell my kids, something bad happens, make something positive out of it. And I think that's exactly what you're doing. And so thanks for that additional, you know, I'm sure it was a, a letdown when the grant was not won, but thanks for the extra, going the extra mile afterwards.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say it out loud.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, so I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Jerry. Second, David. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Great, perfect.